Alright, we're recording, so we're good. Oh, there's more. If we run out of seats, there's still seats up here in the front. There's one, two, three, four, five. There's a couple up here. Heather, there's a seat up here if you want to come sit at the front. There's one up here in the front. We might have to get cozy. Here, just move that chair over. Yeah, and we'll put chairs in front of the long tables if we need to. I think once I get a really, really good number, we'll be able to do this better. So I apologize for the moving around. Alright, let me give these last few people some time. Okay. We'll make room for you, Heather. Alright. Everybody good? Alright, we'll start then. So, uh, welcome to Revelation. I've already been warned, um, that I better do good because people don't come to this normally, so. If I disappoint, I'm sorry. Uh, it's gonna be on YouTube too, so you can watch the catastrophe again if it's really, really, really bad. I'll have that link for you guys later, so I'm gonna record all these, uh, so you can have them again if you want to watch them again or ignore them. When you come in, there's still seats in the front. I promise I shower before I come here, so I won't stink. Um, I may stink after. The, the heat in the room is kinda touchy. It'll either be really, really cold and people are gonna freeze, or it's gonna be really, really hot. Um, either way, I'm hot, so, 'cause I'm standing up here and you're all staring at me. And it's unnerving. But I see a lot of friendly faces, so it's glad, I'm glad you guys came back. I see a lot of friendly faces I don't know, so welcome for the first time. Let's pray, and then I'll, I'll do an abbreviated introduction. So I took this prayer from, uh, believe it or not, I got this from ChatGPT. I was like, give me a prayer about Revelation. This is what I came up with, although it was pretty good, so I'm using it. Okay. So in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, open our hearts and minds as we study Your Word. Help us to see Your Son, Jesus Christ, in all His glory, and give us courage to remain faithful as John did. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen. Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Okay, so a couple things, uh, upfront. A lot of you, I... He said it too. He goes, he's been here all these years, and there's people still he doesn't recognize when he comes in. And I'm seeing that too. I see a lot of people I recognize that are smiling. I see a lot of people that are getting ready to throw books at me, 'cause there's not enough seats. There's still seats up in here. This is definitely a Catholic thing. Everybody wants to sit in the back. Nobody wants to sit in the front row. Okay. So, uh, I'm assuming you all heard the announcement that I did of the Ambo announcement, so I don't need to introduce myself again. But I, I do have a degree in theology, and lucky, she's in the back. She's got one too. She heckles me. In a good way. So you got two theologians in here. So you're gonna get a good, a good, good study. This is kinda what I do all day long. Drives my wife nuts. I just do this all day long. And as I said at the Ambo, it, uh, is probably the worst pain job I've ever had, but the retirement plan is good, so I'm gonna keep doing it. Secondly, you're gonna get a good Catholic interpretation of this. I base this all off Catholic commentaries and stuff, so this is a very good Catholic interpretation. Nothing's gonna be said. It's gonna like, we're all gonna have to run a confession. It's all gonna be good. If I step off a little bit and it's a wild Andy theory, I'll let you know in advance, hey, this is a wild Andy theory. But those are, even those are educated. I don't, I don't like to make just out of the clear blue sky thing. So, you're gonna get a good Catholic interpretation here, and this, it's important, because this book is really, really there. Is everybody on FlockNote getting the FlockNotes? If you're not, I'm gonna put a piece of paper up here, make sure you sign it before we leave. I'll try to get you on FlockNote. But you gotta download FlockNote, so you can sign up, and I'll put your email address in. FlockNote's the, the program that the church uses to talk to everybody, so it's, it's good to have anywhere. Okay. Second thing, I like to be completely transparent as to what I'm using, so you'll know. I'll have the sources up, and this will come in the FlockNote, so you'll have it if you wanna read these things. The first one, everybody should read, 'cause it's the Bible. The second one, this one's by, uh, Dr. Michael Barber. It's a really good, well-written book on Revi... We'll get more chairs. There's two up here. There's at least one here. We can bring another chair, put it up here. So... Hold on, I'll keep talking, and I'll bring a chair for you. Actually, I'm gonna give one chair for you here. So the first one is, uh, by Dr. Barber. He's at the Augustine Institute, so if you're familiar with Form, um, the Augustine Institute runs Form as well. But it's a very well-written book. That coming soon is written in English, so it's not hard. It's a really good book, um, and a very good Catholic interpretation of Revelation, if you're looking for something to read. The third one down there, by Peter S. Williamson. That's the Catholic Commentary on Sacred Scripture. Those of you who have been in the classes before know I'm a big fan of this series. They've got the whole New Testament done. There's this one up here. They've got the whole New Testament done, um, and there's seventeen volumes. It's about this big on my shelf. So it's amazing. It's really amazing. I got another chair. So it's a real amazing book, and they've got one of these for each one of the book, each one of the books in the Bible. The rest of these are Catholic authors as they go. If you notice, nothing really older than nineteen ninety-eight, except for this one. It's pretty old. It's pretty old. Okay, so you got them up there. These are all good Catholic references. If you're looking for something to read, I would start here and work your way down, 'cause I get... If you get down to here, if you're having trouble falling asleep, this is a good book to have. This is a great book to have. This one puts you to sleep too. So we'll start there. Okay. So how are we gonna do this? I'm gonna put them all up, 'cause I don't like... Alright. So here's the plan of the pre-session, right? We'll open with a prayer, I'll talk about it, we'll do this. You can look around. There's almost a hundred people in here again. It's gonna be difficult to do group discussion stuff. So, um, well, I'll try to drag as much participation as I can out of you guys. I will say Tuesday night, two people participated. The guy sitting right in front of me and somebody in the back. I got like three people that wanted to talk. Nobody else wanted to talk. So, uh, the more you talk, the easier it is. So, but I'll, I'll do that, and I'll give you a good reflection on the material. I'll give you the next week's reading. We'll close, and we're out. After that, though, for the last hopefully fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes, not today, we'll have time to sit and discuss and all that, and I'll, I'll stick around. You guys can stay in your groups. It's completely optional. If you don't wanna talk, you're out early. We tried this last study, and it worked really, really well. Uh, what ended up happening in the end was, people asked so many questions, that we talked right through it, and we almost got out late. So, we'll see how it works, okay? But you're welcome to say, I'll stick around and answer any questions that you guys have. Any questions that you have. Next, what do you need to do? Here's your homework. Pretty easy. Um, it's super important to pray before you start reading this stuff. If you don't, you're gonna miss it. So make sure you're praying before you read stuff. I'm, I'm not trying to get on a soapbox here. Read the reading every week. Um, probably about a chapter and a half is what I'm looking at when I looked at all the sessions. You guys are benefiting from the last two classes that we did it. Really, really wore one quick, and people were like, we wanna know more. So we're doing this one slower, and you're gonna get a lot more information out of it. And be thankful. I made the people in the Mark study read the whole Gospel every week. There were, there were some people with some hate coming my way. It was pretty rough. It was pretty rough. Okay, and I'll post readings FlockNotes on Friday, students, as a reminder. Listening? Thank you. Look for a theme in the narratives as you're going through, and as we start talking about this, you'll see what I mean a little bit more. Revelation's really, really neat. Then think about and pray the readings. If you're not doing Lecheo, this is a great time to do Lecheo. Do Lecheo on Revelation. And then be ready to talk to me about it. I'm not the only one here talking. Please. Okay? Again, you guys are not the beta testers anymore. You guys are getting the good stuff. As I'm going through the Bible, as we get into it, and it's on another slide, there's thousands of connections between Revelation and the Old Testament. Thousands, thousands. And when I come in here, I've marked them already, so I've got a distinct advantage. I can flip to it. Stay in Revelation. I'm gonna, on the slides, you'll have all that information. You'll know where to go to look later. But just stay in Revelation. If you try to flip, by the time I get to the third one, you found the first one. Mine are all marked. It's easy, okay? Second, don't shoot the messenger. I didn't write the book. I am not responsible for anything in here that can fix you or makes you feel bad. It's... God wrote the book, so don't shoot the messenger, okay? And if I say something, this is the first time you heard it. That's okay. That's okay. I've been dying to do Revelation since I taught R.C.I.A. Well, I still do. But five years ago, I took it, and one of my friends is in the class. Who's a convert? And, uh, as I started talking about Revelation, his eyes just got bigger and bigger and bigger. And he finally says, why is this the first time I'm hearing this? And ever since I did that, I've wanted to teach this, and then Robin's been asking me to talk it too, so thank you. Thank her for later bringing her cookies, and we're doing this, okay? So i- if it's the first time you hear it, it's okay. It's okay. It's really okay. If you don't get it all this time, that's okay too, 'cause I'm gonna keep doing these till I drop dead. So you can come back, and we'll do it again. We'll do it again. I'll put it on YouTube for you, and I'll send you the link, so you can look for it. And then there's podcasts too, that'll be up eventually. And if you have questions, email to this, and I'll put you on the podcast, and you can be famous. Did you guys watch the new Ghostbusters? The new Afterlife, that one? Yeah, you guys could be my one subscriber. Great. Be fantastic. Alright? So here's how we're gonna do it. So we'll do the first half of Revelation. We're gonna break Revelation into two, 'cause it's big and there's so much in it. Yeah? I can send it out to you again, yeah. It's askabiblicalscholar@gmail. And those all go to my wife, so... I'm just teasing. Okay. So we're gonna do the first half of Revelation in seven sessions, starting this week, ends the week of April third. Caveat, during the week of twenty-five February is the parish mission, so we won't have class that week. And not on the week of twenty-five March. I don't remember what was going there, but Hannah told me I couldn't get in, so. We won't do that. Then we're gonna take like a couple weeks off. You see the third of April to the twenty-first April? 'Cause Annie needs to decompress and get his voice back. We'll do enough seven sessions, and that'll run from the twenty-first to June nineteenth. No class the weeks of five and twelve May, 'cause I'm taking my wife on a night cruise. Alright? So you guys can come, but I won't be here. I won't be here. Alright? It's not built yet. So, um... There's tons of people in here. I'm gonna try to call on a couple, uh, or three or four. But if somebody gives the same answer, it's not that I don't wanna hear your answer, but if I listen to every one of your answers, we'll never get to the material. But what are you guys expecting out of this class? What do you guys want to know about Revelation, or what are your expectations? What are your thoughts about it? What's confusing you about it? Why are there so many people in here? This is a great question. Anybody? Yeah?
I was drawn to your comment from the Ambo about how relevant it is for our age today.
Yes. Yes, I think you'll see that. Excellent. She said she was, uh, drawn to the comment about how it's so relevant today. Book written two thousand years ago, still so relevant today.
I'm, I'm interested also in how it compares to, uh, some Protestant interpretations of Revelation, 'cause I suspect it's gonna be pretty different.
Excellent. So what he said is, he's, he's, he's interested in seeing how the Catholic interpretation of it is compared to a Protestant interpretation. There's been a lot of, and I will say, the media does a lot more of the Protestant interpretation than they do of the Catholic one, right? The Left Behind series and all these other things. So there's that. Anything else? Yes?
To be honest, I've always been terrified about, the Book of Revelation always scared me. And I don't know if it was you or somewhere I read recently that says, said it relates to the Mass. I like to be unscared by reading it and knowing how it really relates to the Mass.
I love that. So she said it's because it used to terrify her, and she wants to see how it compares to the Mass, which is important. It is terrifying. It's frightening, and so it's terribly, terribly frightening. It is scary.
And just basically, just all the symbolism in it that I don't understand the meanings to.
Excellent. So she wants to learn about the symbolism that's all in there. If you haven't gotten there yet, when you read about Jesus, the first description of him is a, uh, a lamb with seven eyeballs. It's been slain, and then later he's got fiery eyes and a sword shooting out of his mouth. I mean, that's a little frightening to me, but we'll, we'll go from there. So we'll get some of that symbolism. What else? Yes? So a deeper understanding of the book. Excellent. Father High had a comment, didn't you?
When I was about to leave, that he asked me something.
I'll do that on purpose. Give me a break.
So I actually raised my hand on purpose. Just letting you know, I wanna be here, because just right before my ordination, I filled the class. You really believe that? I didn't even take the class, you know? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Well, I just wanna say a few minutes, because I had to get back to other meetings. You know that we just formed Young Adult Ministry from age twenty-one to thirty-five? And so far, we have roughly around twelve young adults signed up. So I see some young adults here. If you go to our website on page Faith Formation, under Adult and Young Adult Faith Formation, you just enter your information. On that page, also let you know about our first meeting, where we meet, and things like that. So our first meeting is next week, on Thursday here at six-thirty. We go over about the mission of young adults and how the young adults would like for this group to be. It's focused not just on fellowship, it's about growing faith together, so it's really important. So I invite those who consider as young, between twenty-one and thirty-five, family or single, or with children, without children, welcome. You are welcome. It's will be in English. Secondly, um, we just formed a group for men, and it's called Four for Friday. Uncle, brother, uh, grandparent, husband, et cetera. We form small groups of four, and likely, wherever that group works, they probably go to lunch or breakfast, come together, and talk about faith, share stories, and help each other grow in the Catholic faith. The real teaching of the Church, not four and three gathered and talk about something else, okay? And I will guide that group. So far, we have about seventeen signed up, and so... And lastly, I'm forming a leadership group for women in order to facilitate, help me, have events, retreats for women, whether, um, inviting speaker to come, just as we've been doing, but this time is geared toward women. And if you have the experience in ministry on fire for the Lord, love for the truth, and the dignity of women, and anyone in general, and you discern that God might be calling you to be in that leadership group, you're on the website, under Get Involved and Women Retreat, you can put your name there, and then I and some other leaders will discern with you whether you call to that leadership group. And once we have the retreat, we will make the announcement. So those are the three areas I'm working at the same time right now, so please pray for us, for the Holy Spirit to die. Last but not least, if you're here to study the Word of God and you have time, free time, between twelve and twelve forty-five, you're welcome to go to Mass. You can chew on the book, but it's better to chew on the flesh himself with the Eucharist. I'll be there to see you. I remember who's here, and who will not be there, okay? I'm scanning it, I'm remembering it. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Father.
And there's a special blessing today. It will be a surprise.
Surprises?
It's a big surprise.
Oh, my surprise.
Whether you like it or not, it will be big.
Thank you, Father. Bless tons of stuff. So, uh, sorry, I should've said one last thing. I'll keep putting these on both, so whichever way you face, if you get tired of looking at them, you can look that way. But I only point at this one, because if I point at that one, you can't, you can't see it, so maybe I can use the laser pointer, but we'll do that. So it sounds like you got, has anybody else got a reason why they wanted to come to Revelation? Because here's the thing, um, this is super humbling. I probably see fifty percent new faces. So if there's something about this book, I hope you'll think about coming to Leviticus like this, because Leviticus is just as interesting as Revelation. And if you wanna know about the Mass, Leviticus is the book for you, because it's all about the liturgy. It's about the call of holiness, call of holiness. So there's my pitch. If you all promise to come to Leviticus, I'll teach this class. If not, what are yous doing it? No? Alright. So we'll talk about Leviticus later. Any other, any other things about the book that you guys are like super excited about? Everything you've talked about so far, we're gonna cover. Yes?
I guess I never spent any time in it. I figure it's about complicity.
Yes. So she said she didn't spend any time in it. I, I'll tell you, that's a common thing. I can't tell you how many people told me they've never read the Book of Revelation. Never read the Book of Revelation. So we're gonna read it this time. Yeah?
I'm Joe. I live in Catholic school. And we're always called, uh, in front of a present class, a different, so we need to live what we think it means. And we've never, ever, in all my life, talked about this.
Never talked about Revi... So, yeah, there, there you go. Revelation's probably, other than Leviticus, one of the fewest-read books in the Bible. There's a couple in the, in the dictionary. Yeah?
I know, uh, when I did Revelation with Dr. Scott Hahn, he mentions it's the most Catholic book of all. And he also says that it's the book that he let a Bible study on, that led him to be a Catholic.
Yeah.
It's the book.
So she said that when she took Scott Hahn's course, which you probably are gonna enjoy more than me, 'cause he's far smarter than I am. But, uh, uh, she said it's the, he says it's the most Catholic book, and it is. It is the most Catholic book. There's, there, you'll see all these ties in as we go through it. Probably not all today, but we'll see them as we go through it, definitely. Definitely one of the most Catholic books, and, uh, well, we'll, we'll move on a little bit and see. I'll get more answers. Was there another crazy answer that was crazier than mine? No? Okay, sorry. I'm gonna do this super quick for the people who aren't here. My wife hated this on Tuesday. She may fall asleep again. Okay? So, but I have to put this out here, because especially for the Book of Revelation. I got a chair up here, and there's space up here. You wanna sit at the table? You can sit up front. I promise I don't bite or smell. Okay, so especially with the Book of Revelation, there's actually, believe it or not, a book that tells us how to read the Bible. It's actually just a, a letter, and it's in the Second Vatican documents. Other than the Bible, this might be my most, my favorite religious letter. For those of you who sat in class before, you've heard this three times, so I'll go quickly through it. But what you can do is you can pull this offline, you can pull it off the Vatican site. You can buy it on Amazon for three or four bucks. Um, if you buy the whole book, I think it's twenty-five bucks. And I'm tickled every time Jeff Bezos delivers one of these things to me. It just makes me feel really, really good. But you can do that, and if you're really fancy dancy, um, Bishop Barron did one, two, and two volumes, and it's really pretty, and it's, but it's like seventy bucks. But it's free on the Vatican website. But anyway, so Devergone, which means Word of God, is, tells us how to interpret the Bible. And this is super important for us in Revelation, 'cause there's tons of spooky stuff in there. So I'll go real, real quick. There's two senses of Scripture when we're reading it that we need to keep in mind, the literal sense and the spiritual sense. The literal sense is the meaning conveyed by the words of Scripture literally. Now, when I say literally, that doesn't mean the literal words, right? Necessarily all the time. For instance, uh, the, the Book of Genesis says, "The world was created in seven days." Did he really mean literally seven days, or did he mean God created the world out of nothing? So the literal meaning they're trying to get across is, God created the world out of nothing. You can believe seven days as you want. You can believe ten thousand years if you want. The Catholic Church doesn't care either way. All we're required to believe is, God made the world out of nothing. Made man in his own image. All these things that are the truths that were required to believe. Now, do I need to believe in the sixth day that he did it? No, I don't. So that's a literal meaning where we're doing it. It can mean the literal, the actual literal words. When Jesus said, "This is my body," that was literal. He meant that word for word. So we have to do a little jogging in here. When we see Jesus described as a lamb with seven eyeballs and his cut throat, we probably don't wanna believe that literally, right? But we need to figure out what he's gonna do. So we need to do this based on the literal. If you have your catechism, they're gonna do it more deeply in one sixteen. And then there's the spiritual sense. This is what everybody likes to talk about. This is all the, the hidden meanings that are in Scripture. And there's three ways we can look at that. There's the allegorical sense, so we're, um, this is where we're looking at, things in the Old Testament that point to things or fulfillments in the New Testament. For instance, if you think about Moses crossing the Red Sea. Moses crossing the Red Sea, he's leading the people of Israel from slavery into freedom. Jesus leads us from slavery to sin to freedom from sin. So that crossing the Red Sea points towards Jesus and what we're doing. And it's an Old Testament prefigurement. We're gonna see tons of these. There's like a thousand of them in Revelation. They're all over the place. If you don't know the Old Testament, you're gonna have a harder time understanding Revelation. So I'll point those out, so you'll know where they are, okay? Then you got the moral sense. This is a sense everybody likes to ignore, because this tells us what we should do. Right? Like the Ten Commandments. Like, ah, let's get that. Let's get that. Right? So we'll get some of those. And then you got this anagogical sense, and this is what points towards salvation. There's tons of this in Revelation as well. It's gonna point towards our final end. Point towards our final end. Now, every bit of Scripture has one of these. It may have all three. It may have two. We'll just figure it out as we go. That work? And you'll have this, and look at these while you're reading it occasionally and think about it. But the most important thing is to get what the original author meant. Everything else comes from there. Everything else comes from there. Everybody good with that? Any questions? This is a really good document. It's a short read. You should read it. Everybody should read it. This is a document while we all have Catholic Bibles in English, is because of this document. Okay? I just did one, so I'm not gonna do that one. People in the last class, I know this is really, really, really tiny, but they asked, you know, how I was able to do all this at the same time. So this is called Verbum Software. You can get it online. If you go into Verbum, you can get it. It's free. The stuff that comes with it is not free. I spent a lot of money on this, so I'm not gonna tell my wife how much. But, uh, as I was in school, they paid for all this. But what it'll do is, is you're buying books, and they're electronically, I can also scan in all my paper books. So when I look up a subject, it'll tell me, go to page five sixteen on this book. But as I'm reading these, when people are asking, how are you getting all at the same time? This, oh, wrong button. Back. Gotta be smarter than the machine. Oh, okay, good, whatever. So I got the Bible on this side, and then all, no, I got the Bible on this side, and then all these are keyed into it, so as I scroll through, it pulls up a commentary for that section, and I can read six books at once. So it's really nerdy. It's really fun. You can do it, but it'll cost a little money. But it's a good software. That's how I do a lot of this stuff. Okay. I think we should talk about Revelation. Does that work for everybody? Alright, let's go for about thirty minutes, and then we'll take a break. Okay. We talked about some of this stuff. Most misunderstood book in the Bible. Probably the most misquoted book in the Bible. Probably the most misquoted book in the Bible as well. So there's spooky words in there, right? Arcane symbolism, so spooky words, spooky stuff. It, it starts to make us feel weird about ourselves. For instance, if I say, and I'm dying to hear y'all's answer to this, we might get the same one, Robin, 'cause we've got some younger people back there. What comes to your mind when I say the word Armageddon? Say it out loud. The end, alright. I got it, the end. What else? One more time?
Three Days of Darkness.
Three Days of Darkness. Oh my gosh, it's gonna be horrible. Armageddon. Anybody else? So Tuesday night, somebody yelled, Bruce Willis. From the movie. Is that what you were gonna say? Bruce Willis? Darn it. I missed it. He said Bruce Willis, so Armageddon. But we do, right? We see Armageddon, and if you think about that, the movie Armageddon, when they quote it, they said, "This is the day of the end." What's spoken of in the Bible is Armageddon. Yeah? Solomon de Mora. See, everybody thinks that. I hate to ruin your lives here, but Armageddon just means the plain of Megadoth. It's a place. Megadoth's a mountain. Armageddon just means the plain of Megadoth. That's where they're gonna meet and have their battle. It doesn't imply anything else. It's a plain in, in Israel. That's all it is. It's just a flat area where armies would meet. Armageddon is Hebrew for plain of Megadoth. I mean, I hate to read. There's no Bruce Willis. There's no Three Days of Darkness. None of that's happening. Alright? If I were to say apocalypse, what do you guys think of? Explosions! What else? I love it. Battles. What else?
Revelation.
Revelation? Oh my gosh, there's this crazy stuff going on. Look at this. We got all these things. That's all it means. It's Revelation. It means unveiling. That's all it means. It doesn't mean battle. It doesn't mean explosions. It doesn't mean the world's gonna collapse, and it's all gonna be over. There's just crazy stuff all throughout the book that's like that, right? So as we're thinking of this, we need to think about what the words really mean. But we'll, we'll go over more of these. It's fun. So it's crazy. It's got weird stuff in it. Like I said, Jesus is a lamb, and then he's a man with eyeballs, a fire, and swords flying out of his mouth, and, um... I mean, read some of these images. It's really, really graphic and spooky. I mean, he's walking around with his throat split. I mean, but they never did that in life, but we'll talk about it. There's several hundred allusions to the Old Testament. They say, it depends on who you're talking to, between two hundred and over a thousand. Twenty-two chapters, a scroll's ten thousand words. There's a thousand, more than a thousand allusions to the Old Testament. So you're gonna get to know your Old Testament really, really, really well by reading this book, which is why I say it's most Catholic. It's universal, okay? "The historical circumstances in which it was written are unfamiliar to many people." So what was going on when this was written? Anything I know?
Persecution.
Persecution. Where? Okay, I got Nero. So Rome. Where else?
Domitian, right?
Domitian, maybe? We're gonna talk about those two. Could be Domitian. See, we don't even know where it happened. See, so we're gonna talk about this and do it. This is so important. If we don't know this, we're not gonna get the meaning of the book. We're not gonna get the meaning of the book. And then the structure is difficult, concern. Can anybody tell me how this book goes? Because usually when I read a book, I start on page one. It goes right to the end of the book and it's a straight line. Unless you're reading one of those choose-your-own-adventures of the catechism, uh, excuse me, the catechism where you're bouncing around. But most of them start to finish. Revelation isn't written like that. And that's why it's confusing. People are trying to figure out what's going on here. Wait, this happened before? And why are we jumbled up? And I've got a picture, I'm gonna show you what it's actually written like. Makes it a little easier. Okay? And then the, the worst is, the topics, the hardest, right? We're talking about the final judgment and the end of times, which really scares the living daylights out of all of us. Right? This is the, that's what's the worst. Okay, let's keep going. Yeah? Yes?
Speaking of like the historical significance and all that, I, the thing about that there's not a controversy as to whether this was actually written by John the disciple or some other John.
We're gonna talk about that. Hold that thought. Okay? I should've said this Tuesday, so I'm gonna say it now to you guys. We're going to all this stuff today, because it's important and it's gonna help focus what we do on, on, on the book. Has anybody ever tried giving a, a pill to a cat that didn't want to take it? So we're doing the day by day. So I'm gonna tell you all these neat little facts and all this. This is me putting that nice little thing around the pill before I shove it down your throat. So that's what this is. So this is gonna get it from our head to our heart, right? And if I can interest you, get you laughing as I'm talking about this, we're gonna punch that right down into your heart. Otherwise, you're all gonna scratch me like a cat. And there's a hundred of you, and I really don't want that to happen. Okay? Well, let's talk about this here. Okay? So the genre of this book is super important. Can anybody tell me what the genre is? Hint, it's the first line. If you can read Greek, yeah, it's an apocalypse. So it's apocalypse. So this is important for us, right? Because if I read a history book and I think it's a novel, I'm gonna be sorely disappointed. Flip, vice versa, it's gonna be worse too, right? If I'm reading a romance and I want to think this is history, it's not gonna go well for me. So we need to know what it's talking about. And this is apocalypse. It is apocalypse. And apocalypse, as he was nice enough to say, was, means revelation. It's the, it's a Greek word and it means revelation. I actually pulled up a dictionary for you. And the bold stuff is less important here. So I pulled this right out of a big Greek dictionary that's thick enough to kill a goat. It's that heavy. So it literally means uncovering, making fully known, revelation disclosure, revelation of the truth, revelation of a perfect, a particular kind of revisions. Those are all important things. That's all apocalypse means. So it's an unveiling. It was very common in the Old Testament.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah?
Are there any other books that are apocalypse?
Yes. Yes! I'm gonna show you right here. This is the only one in the New Testament. It's the only one in the New Testament. And it was a very popular kind of writing from about 200 B.C. to 200 A.D. Very, very popular. If you think of this period of time, this is when the Jewish people are being sorely persecuted, right? And if I'm telling the Greeks, I tell, "Alexander's just conquered me and I think he's the devil." And I tell them that, blind out what's gonna happen to me. I'm gonna find myself on a cross. So I tell them he's a goat instead and they don't know. So a lot of these were written in the symbolism to hide things. And it's very familiar to the Jewish people. Okay? So that word doesn't have the connotation into the Jewish people that it has to us. I mean, when we think, we think of battles and Three Days of Darkness and, I don't know, dragon descending from heaven. This is what we think of. But that's not what they thought of. They just thought of it as a fantastical type of writing. They were very common and they were very familiar with. And I'll show you the books in a second. So they thought they were prophetic words or visions when it was written today. So apocalypse occurs once in the Book of Revelation. Once and only once. And we've got this huge imagery on it. It occurs once. And people have drawn all these conclusions out of it from once. Okay, it's 17 times in the New Testament. And a lot of it's in Paul. So I put these up here. "Now, brothers, if I come speaking to you in tongues, how will I benefit unless I bring you some revelation?" The word apocalypse. Or knowledge or prophecy or teaching. And then this one was there too. "Otherwise, if you give thanks with your spirit, can anyone, how can anyone in a position of an outsider say amen to your thanksgiving when he does not know what you are saying?" So it's just an unveiling. This is what they're talking about, when they talk about revelation. Where's the? There we go. Take me back. Okay. John's originalized, you just would've seen this as another Christian prophecy. That's it. They wouldn't have seen anything strange about this. It's comparable to Isaiah, Ezekiel, and Daniel. Daniel's a little older than the 200s. It was probably the first book of, of, of really popular apocalyptic writing. But if you read Ezekiel and read the description of God in heaven, it's spooky. The throne's got wheels with eyeballs in every directions and angels have foreheads and there's leopards and, I mean, it's spooky stuff. You're reading that and if you're not paying a lot of attention, you're like, that's, I don't want to go there. Very spooky, spooky stuff, yeah?
Yeah, my understanding was, just like you say there, the original audience wouldn't have found it spooky, because this was a very common genre back then. With all this kind of weird imagery, what we think of as weird imagery. But back then, it was, this is the only surviving in the Bible, especially instance of it. That was actually pretty common.
And I will tell you, as much as our Christian brethren like to admit it, most people don't read Isaiah, because it's tough. A lot of people don't read Ezekiel. They start seeing thrones with eyeballs and they just flip the page, move over. And Daniel's just darn right spooky. It's just, it's one of my favorite books in the Bible. It's darn right spooky. But we're just not familiar to seeing this. But all these, when you're looking at all these, Daniel was written while they were exiled to Babylon. So he's talking about Never Can Ezra and he doesn't want to end up in a furnace. Ezekiel's as exilic, he's right in the middle of the exile. Isaiah is exilic, he's right in the middle of the exile. And John is on Patmos after his men. These are all exilic type writings where they're trying to hide what they're really saying. So, okay? So that's it, not spooky or strange. But this is similar to other non-biblical first-century Jewish literature. This was wildly popular, wildly popular. One Enoch's actually, so all four of these, one, two, three, four, yeah. All four of these books are not biblical books. One Enoch, four Ezra, two Baruch, Apocalypse of Abraham. These are all, one more time? These are all not biblical books, but they were very popular Jewish literature. So they give us an idea what the Jewish people are thinking. One Enoch, in fact, is quoted in the Bible. It's not a biblical book, but it is actually quoted in the Bible twice. But they're, they're written a lot like, a lot like Revelation. But these are all the first-century Jewish stuff. Right? Very familiar to these people. This, none, this would've shocked the Jewish people at all. Okay? So we got that. Is everybody good with the genre? It's gonna be spooky, we're gonna have fun. Author, somebody mentioned this. Four times the author identifies himself as John. So there's two competing theories, as she was nice enough to say. One is John the Apostle. And the early church fathers, many of them, identified as, as John the Apostle. I put some names up here on some of them. This isn't everybody, but some of these are really heavyweights. You notice a lot of them have saint in front of them? So that gives me a lot of weight. Right? Saint Justin Martyr in 1:65. Saint Eurnias was, uh, he was a disciple of Polycarp, who was a disciple of John the Apostle. So he's one-off. He knew Polycarp who knew John. I take his opinion very heavily. Saint Clement of Alexandria, Trutulian, Saint Hippolytus. If you haven't written anything by him, you're missing out. It's great. Orzen was really great. He was exiled twice and called a heretic and then brought back in. He's really interesting. Saint Athanasius, if you, when you're at Mass and you say the Nicene Creed, this man was at that council. He was one of the strong ones about, that wrote about that, at that council of Nicia. And then Saint Jerome, everybody's favorite. The grumpy man of Jerusalem. Okay? So tons of, tons of guys from the first third, fourth centuries say, "This was John the Apostle who did it." But some of the other church fathers disagree. And I put some names up here. Some of these are pretty good heavyweights. Papiest is pretty close. I mean, he's within 80 years of Jesus. He has no saint in front of him though. Saint Dionysus has got some neat stuff. He's 200s. Eusebius was the famous, he wrote the first church history that we have. We still use it today. He wrote an early church history of the church. Saint Cyril, amazing guy. And then Saint Gregory of Manzians is a power. I mean, there's more writings by him than almost everybody else. Same with Saint John of Christos. So who's right? We don't know. We don't know, right? Because he had told, I will tell you, when I'm looking at these two lists though, these are a lot further away. These are a lot further away, other than Papiest, who was not a saint, than this list. And this guy may have known him and, I mean, probably didn't know him personally, but he knew a disciple who was talking to him. And it would make sense if Polycarp said, "Yeah, John wrote this for us not to be true." I lean towards John. Okay? So why the disagreement? A lot of people say, and you read this, is what I'm talking about. A lot of people say it's because of the writing style, phraseology, and patterns of thought. The Gospel's in this beautiful, elegant Greek and the Revelations in this choppy Hebrew kind of sounding Greek. So could've been John. John couldn't have written this. Right? Well, this is easily explained. So a lot of people in those days, if you read Paul's letters, you'll actually see it. You know, he'll be writing a letter and you'll see, "Icelinus write this." And you're like, wait, I thought this was from Paul. No, it is. He was his secretary. He was this animusus. A lot of them employed this. Mark was Peter's animusus, which is why it's the Gospel of Mark. It's about Peter. Right? So a lot of these guys use them. Paul used different ones every time, so I guess me was hard to talk to. And he got a different one every time. But do you think they exiled John's secretary with him? No, he was there by himself. So he probably actually wrote that by himself. Easily explain, the stylistic problems. Let's keep going. You can look at these later. I'm not gonna read these all to you. These are like 10 or 15 of the things that are like word for word the same. Jesus is the word. Jesus is a lamb. The mother of Jesus being called woman. Christ is a shepherd. These are all things that are common in both. Right? So I mean, they're, they're making a big deal out of nothing. Western tradition, which is us, follows areas church fathers. Western tradition says John the Apostle wrote this book. Which is us, we're Western tradition. And I'll pause real quick there. There's a lot of conflict about Revelation. Some of the Eastern churches don't like it. Some of the Eastern churches don't like it, no use. That are Catholic, so this is, but. Anyway, I quoted this straight out of Dr. Barber's book. "It seems unlikely, highly unlikely, that anyone other than apostle could write with such authority to seven different churches in Asia Minor." So these were the churches that John was working. These were his churches. I mean, he was living there with Mary, doing that. This would be like Vladimir Putin coming over here and making a presidential announcement. Right? That's not, that's not, not gonna happen. So we've got that part. This is especially true if John the Apostle has, I just said that, the authorities over the region at the time, as well attested tradition says. "It is hard to believe then that the writer of Revelation, who assumes a position of authority over seven different churches and who also presents himself as one with special authority from the Lord, is not an apostle." This is one of those, if it smells like a cat and it looks like a cat and it tastes like a cat, it's a duck. No, it's a cat. It's a cat. Right? Okay? And the bottom line of this all is, the church receives the book as divinely inspired and canonical. That's the bottom line. That's the bottom line. I mean, really, if Tim wrote the book, it doesn't matter when you've got this caveat. The church has said it's divinely inspired Scripture. So we need to read it as such. Okay?
Except for the Eastern.
There's conflict with it, there. They don't like it. They don't like it. Because it's very Catholic. It's very Catholic, as you're gonna see, it's very Catholic. There's censors and smoke and there's, we'll get to it. There's all kinds of good stuff. Okay? Can you guys go 10 more minutes and then we'll stop? Okay? So let's, remember, you're getting all this information. I'm giving you that nice chewy nugget if I shove this pill down your throat. Here it comes. Here it comes. Okay. So, when was this thing written? I heard two. Somebody said Domitian, somebody said Nero. Well, those are the two leading hypotheses. And you're gonna hear this, and when you talk to your Protestant friends, they're gonna pick one side or the other. We can pick a side. Okay? The majority opinion... So, we're talking, most scholars, most people believe that it was written during the nineties, during the reign of Domitian. So, there's both modern and ancient sources, they think this. And our, our good friend Sanier Anais, who knew Polycarp, who was a disciple of John, in his book Against Heresies, which is famous. You should read it. It's really, 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 really good. So, Sanier Anais was talking about the Arian heresy. And the Arian heresy is Jesus, there was a time when Jesus didn't exist. So, this is a big, big heresy that he was fighting. He wrote this huge book on it called Against Heresies. It's fantastic. What he said is, "John beheld the apocalyptic vision, no, a very long time ago," which means not a very long time ago, "uh, but almost in our day, towards the end of Domitian's reign." That's what Anais wrote. And there's the quote, in 530.3. Okay? These guys agreed. So, Eusebius, Clementus of Alexandria in Origen, and Victorinus. I can't find a lot about him, but his name is really, really cool. I like that name. If I were Latin, that would be my name. Victorinus. In fact, Robin, I'm Andy Victorinus. Changed my name. Second hypothesis. This is the minority opinion. Okay? Minority opinion says mid-sixties, during the reign of Nero. During the reign of Nero. And we've got some data that says that. The Syriac version of the Book of Revelation begins by stating it was written in Patmos, Patmos, to which John was sent by Nero Caesar. And another Syriac work says, that talks about John, son of Zed the Azur, said Nero exiled him. So, that's true. But could he have been exiled twice? Sure. Sure, he could've been exiled twice. Origen was exiled like two or three times. So, it could happen, right? So, but a point here I wanna make is minority doesn't mean wrong. Minority doesn't mean wrong. Jesus' opinion was a minority opinion when he was walking on the earth. It's still a minority opinion. Right? Just minority doesn't mean wrong. This, the, a big thing with the minority opinion is, I'm gonna say, most Catholics are in this minority opinion. So, before Vatican II, there weren't, the only, the only theologians we had were priests. They were priests. You know, Martin Luther did his thing, and the churches went, "Shh, only priests are allowed to do this." And Vatican II, this would open this up to rigid scholarship for Catholics. It's the only reason I got to go to grad school, was because of Vatican II. So, you've got this growing group of Catholic scholars. And theology was dominated by, uh, German secular theology. And if you're not familiar with that is, it's if you can't put your finger on it, it's not true. So, God can exist. So, I'm gonna cut the Bible up and look for this, excluding God from the equation on a lot of the stuff. So, you've got this secular group who's trying to go, eh. And theology's been dominated by that. And you know, you can see a shift in our priests too, because they were taught by people that followed this, where it was, "If I can't prove it, it didn't happen." It didn't happen. Um, one of them's a Jesus project. You can read about it. They went through the Bible, uh, the New Testament, took all the saints of Jesus, and just started hacking them, saying, "He couldn't have possibly said any of this." Out of all the saints of Jesus, I think they said there are four of them, that they said that they can tie to them.
Sort of like Thomas Jefferson.
Yes. Yes. So, I mean, this is what's dominating it. And then after Vatican II, so you're talking sixties or seventies, we're starting to see a lot more Catholic theologians. So, when I say minority, it's the growing opinion that it was done by Nero. It was written by Nero. I mean, he was executed by Nero. Okay. You don't have to read all this, read it later. So, the reason they're saying this, that they're following this, uh, hypothesis that it was probably Nero was, in sixty-eight A.D., a fire broke out in Rome. Huge fire, burnt almost Rome, all Rome down. The only part of Rome that didn't get burned down was the Christian quarter. So, Nero could blame it all on the Christians. I mean, that's when the persecution started, right? And most of the rumors say it was probably Nero that actually started the fire so they could do this. But what is interesting here, and you probably wanna read, is the persecutions that Nero did. I won't talk about all them. I mean, it was horrifying what he did to these people. Um, he would, uh, light Christians on fire in his backyard and watch them burn for entertainment while he had people playing the fiddle. I mean, they've got this stuff documented. Um, he would crucify people and impale them at the same time, and leave them in his yard, boil them, chop them up. I mean, you think of it, it's gross. It's all in here. I mean, I'll read all of it. They were, uh, covered with skins of beasts, torn by dogs, nailed to crosses, burnt in flames to serve as nightly illumination. So, I mean, he used them to light up his yard so he could entertain his guests. This was the man, right? Uh, and then you, you hear the lion stories, where the lions are attacking like that. Yep, that's our boy Nero. That's our boy Nero. Okay? So, he did all this. I won't talk about it anymore, because we don't get gruesome. But what Dr. Barber's saying here is, Domitian wasn't tyrant. He did do persecutions, but he didn't come close to this. I mean, this was awful. This was awful what Nero was doing. Uh, so although he was a tyrant, he failed to reach the levels of cruelty set by Nero. I mean, Nero was the worst. In fact, a lot of people said Domitian might be... Now we're recording. Okay, um... So, I can turn up the microphone louder, but the last time I turned it up louder, it started feeding back so badly that nobody could hear. Um, so I'll try to talk into it a little bit more. If you're not hearing me, raise your hand, so I, I know you're not hearing me. Then I can do that. Um, the second thing is, is I get more excited about the material, my speed picks up. Right? And especially when one of you leads me down a, uh, an off path that I find fascinating. Man, I'm going fast and quick, and the rest of you are wondering what I'm talking about. I was a motorcycle rider too, so go like this, and I'll slow down. I don't notice I'm doing it. Next thing, I'm going nine hundred miles an hour, and I'm having a blast, and all y'all are going, "What is happening?" So, uh, if I'm talking too fast, say something. If you can't hear me, say something. You were my helper last time. You haven't been helping.
Uh-oh.
Wave me down. Wave me down, okay? If I'm going too fast, wave me down. I'll try to stop, but I'm, I tell you, ten minutes from now, I'm gonna be running a mile a minute again, because that's just the way it goes. Okay? So, I'll try to talk louder and slower. Um, wave if I'm not. If it becomes eleven-thirty, and you wanna leave, and you wave, I'm gonna keep going. So, we'll go with that. So, we went through all that history, genre, and all that stuff, so we could get the candy around the pill, so we can stick it down our throat. Uh, but we need to know how to interpret it now too. So, this is, we're gonna put all this together, talk about how to interpret it, and then we'll talk a little bit about Revelation today, more of it last, next week. So, we need, keep in mind, when we're reading the book, that this was written first to address the situation of his contemporaries. So, it was persecution, whether you believe it's Nero or Domitian, doesn't matter. Um, and I'll say why in a second, but I, I think it's Nero. Everything points to Nero. And like I said, if it smells like a duck, smells like a duck, tastes like a duck, walks like a duck, screams like a duck, it's probably a cat. Uh, okay? So, we got that. Second, I have to understand the first century context, or this is not gonna make any sense at all. If we miss the first century context, we're gonna miss the whole bus, and we're gonna miss the whole meaning of the point. This is why people believe a dragon with a hooker on back is coming back at the end of time. Because it says it in the book, and everybody believes it literally. Okay? The third point is, is the structure of Revelation is really fascinating. It is. But it's spooky and bewildering. And unlike some of the Old Testament prophetic books, so you're thinking Amos, or the other ones that you don't read. I'm just teasing. Uh, Revelation, instead of giving all these, "Your bed? You need to repent? If you don't repent, I'm gonna judge you. I'm gonna crush you," and then they revise it. That's not how Revelation does it. Revelation tells us in a narrative. It's kind of a story. So, it's different, um, than even Daniel, which was another, uh, apocalyptic style book. So, Revelation's just different, because it's a narrative. But instead of being a straight line, running from now until the end of history, it's like this circles. This is how Revelation's told. It goes in circles. So, we've got all these intersection points. And if I started here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get back to there before I continue. And it's these circles, and circles, and circles. And then the meaning of it's gonna shoot right down the middle. Right? So, we're gonna get to the end, but we're going by the absolute longest route we can get there. Right? And he's gonna circle, and circle, and circle. Yeah?
Sorry, I have a question. So, I'm struggling with, uh, still going back to the meaning of Revelation, the unveiling versus prophecy. And is the Book of Revelation, an unveiling, just telling me something versus is it prophetic? Tell me something that's going to happen.
Okay, so she's asking whether, uh, Revelation is an unveiling, or whether it's actually a prophecy. Right? Um, well, you're gonna find this unsatisfying, because this is usually the answer, right? The Catholic answer to these kind of questions is, yes. The Catholics like both and. Right? That's a Catholic answer, both and. Um, some other groups are either or. We're more of a both and. Both and. Jesus was both man and God. Both and. Uh, so this is both. It's gonna unveil some stuff about what's going on in this, right in the first century, and then it's gonna tell us what's gonna happen over, and over, and over, and over again. So, if you think about this, if he's telling the story of Revelation, he's talking about Nero, and he goes through this Nero story, and then he comes back around, there's Domitian. And it goes around, there's Adolf Hitler. And it goes around... Jimmy Carter. I don't know. I can't think of this. So, it's going around, and around, and around. Right? Um, and so, we're seeing these fulfillment, after fulfillment, after fulfillment, after fulfillment, after fulfillment. So, Jesus told us in all four Gospels, when did he say the end of time was gonna be?
Only the Father knows.
Only the Father knows. We're never gonna know. That's why it just keeps going around, and around, and around, and around. How many times is it gonna go around? Enough times. Enough times. That's how many times it's gonna go around. We don't know. We don't know. It'll come tomorrow. I mean, if you're looking today, uh, and I'll show you in just a minute, and you're gonna go, "Oh, my gosh." It's the same thing. We're Rome. We live in Rome. The United States is Rome. The Rome of this book. Okay? So, as we're looking at that, and we're seeing this, and we're like, "Why did I come back here again?" Because that's what John wrote. That's the way it is. This is just a circular action happening over, and over, and over again. So, it's both a revelation of what happened, and it's a prophecy of what's gonna happen. So, everything that happened to John, in John's time, is gonna happen in our time. Okay. Think about some of the literary features when we're doing this. It's recapitulation, just means redoing it again. So, like the Red Sea story I told you, where we went from slavery to freedom, slavery from sin to freedom from sin. That's a recapitulation. There's thousands of biblical illusions. You're gonna get to love your Old Testament if you read Revelation. There's tons of it. And then we've got all that spooky language and stuff. We know that's coming. So, we gotta be able to take that spooky stuff and turn it into English, so that we know. And remember, this was written for a first-century Jewish person. Um, and keep this in mind, um, none of the apostles quit being Jewish. They don't think they were anything but Jewish. So, they're writing to Jewish people. Uh, if you, if you look at Peter and Paul, they thought they were new covenant Jews. If there's six other covenants, and this is the seventh, you've still gotta be a Jew, otherwise it would be the first covenant of Christianity. Right? Yeah?
Do you think it was addressed mainly to Jews in Judea? Or Jews in the dispersion, or Rome, or what?
Well, you're not gonna like this answer. I'm gonna say, um, yes.
Yeah.
So, the question was, who was it written to? Was it written to the Jews in Jerusalem? Was it written to the Jews in here? I, specifically, it was written to those seven churches first. But we know seven, it compiles completeness. So, it was written to them first, and to the universal church afterwards. So, the answer is, yes. Both and. And we're gonna find this. That's why it's a Catholic book. And say, the Catholic answer, if you're thinking, could this mean, yes? Yeah, probably. Probably. Okay, so here's the four things that John talks about. So, this is what we're gonna focus on. The content of John's prophecy can be summarized as a revelation of four things. The conditions of the church's nation. That's the first thing he wrote about. Then he wrote about God's sovereignty and Christ's lordship over history. The conflict and tribulation before Christ's return. Think of that circle. It's gonna keep coming around, keep coming around, keep coming around. And then a preview, in general terms. And I should underline, in general terms, of how God will fulfill His promises, defeat evil, and save His people. So, we know he's gonna do that. He's gonna fulfill His promises, he's gonna defeat evil, and he's gonna save His people. When is he gonna do it?
Only in Rome.
When enough time has passed. How long's enough time? We don't know. And we're not gonna know, uh, until it happens. That's why the, keep alert. Okay? And throughout these unveilings, he's gonna weave this exhortation to his readers to get an appropriate response. What's the appropriate response to all this? What's our response to what he's saying, do you think?
Hope.
Hope is one of them, definitely. Repentance. Repentance. If you go back all the way to the Old Testament, from the first start, when Adam sinned, until today, every action of God has been aimed at repentance. If it wasn't, he would've just wiped us out after Adam sinned. Every single thing has been repentance. For those of you that didn't sit in the Mark class, repentance is anything that turns you towards God. You're going two directions, right? I'm either going towards God, or I'm going away from Him. Right? If you think of it binary, it's a better way to do it, because it'll be easier for your decision-making. And we all know there's, our life really goes like a snake, right? Sneebop a little bit. But if you look and go, "Am I going towards God or going away from God?", it's a yes or no question. And for Mark, anything that's not going at him is going away. Even if you're going a little bit off, you're going away. So, every action, everything in Revelation is fit just to turn back towards Jesus. That's the whole aim of this book, it's repentance. All these horrible things that happen to people defined to get you to, designed to get you to turn back towards, uh, God. The frightening part of it is, is we know some of these people are going to hell. Because this is true. The goal is not to be in that group. Right? We're trying to be in the other group. Okay. So, here's some things I pulled out. And this is why, when somebody told me earlier, I don't remember during the break, um, or at the beginning, that they wanna know, because I said it was so relevant today. So, here's what, this is the issue that was facing John's church. Tell me this does not sound like twenty-first century America. A secular culture, whose mass media, entertainment, and educational systems are often hostile to the church and her beliefs and morals. So, if we look at the difference, mass media in Rome was graffiti on a wall, or the guy standing out there on the pillar yelling at people. That was their mass media and entertainment. Their entertainment was the burning Christians, apparently, in Nero's yard. Um, hostile. So, I mean, it's the exact same thing. We're in the same spot right here, right? It's almost a crime to be a Catholic today. Okay? The second one. "We live in an international, materialistic, consumerist, sexually immoral culture that seduces many away from their Christian faith." Yep, that sounds like America. Turn on the TV. We were, we were watching a show the other day. My wife and I started watching, um, we probably need to turn them off. I was gonna say sports, but it's just as bad. I mean, but anyway, we were watching a reality show, and, uh, because I just can't pay regular TV anymore. But anyway, every woman's shirt was cut down to here. On the poor TV in the middle of the day. Uh, sexually immoral culture. That sounds just like this. This one. "While literal idolatry, the worship of pagan gods and their physical images is less common today," I'd argue that's wrong. But, um, then it was in the first century. Spiritual idolatry manifests an excessive love for and ultimate trust in created things rather than God, whether wealth, pleasure, science, technology, governments, institutions, celebrities, or Donald Trump, is stronger than ever. And I only mention his name, because you see that on TV. He's demanding this almost cult-like loyalty to him. Um, but you could say anybody else. You could say Jimmy Carter too. You could say Ronald Reagan. You could say all these people. Um, which is sad. Um, this is not all, don't, don't take this as a saying as us. Let this convict you as it convicts you. The one that got me was pleasure, because if you've been in my other classes, I love lemon bars. I really love lemon bars. I love pizza too, so, all of you that brought me lemon bars last time, I love it. But pizza's wonderful too. And my wife has a recipe for cookies. It's just a fine, I'm telling you, it's gonna send me to hell. Get that recipe from her, and bury my dissent. I'm stupid. But if we look at these, this should be, and remember that Donald Trump joke was a joke. It was a joke. I wasn't picking on anybody. But we look at it, we see our celebrities on TV. We see our celebrities on TV. Everybody wants to be a movie star. Everybody wants to be a rock star. Or, you know what I mean? Just pulling everybody in. And then, as we were thinking about idolatry, we need to remember, idolatry is the work of human hands, right? The work of human hands. So, the Bible describes, uh, an idol in, in the Psalms. It has, uh, eyes that can't see, a mouth that can't speak, and ears that can't hear. So, when I pull this up, it's got eyes that can't see, ears that can't hear, and a mouth that can't speak. And then on the back of it is an apple, and it's got a bite out of it. This is usually the last thing peoples look at before they go to sleep. And it's usually the first thing they look at when they get up. And what's the, and if you read, that's convicting. That frightened the livid daylights out of me whenever. Good it is, it's the first thing I pick up, it's the last thing I put up, before I go to bed. And we should be talking to God first thing we wake up, and talking to God before we go to bed. So, I make sure I do that and use that to read the Bible along too, so I'm... Using the enemy's weapon against Him. But I mean, think of that. Whatever you look at first and last is what you like most. And what you think about. And what you think about, yeah. Oh yeah, so the Psalm says, an idol, the Psalm is an exhortation against idolatry. And it says, and they're lamenting about the idol and it says, the idol has, or God's talking to them saying, "An idol has eyes but it can't see, ears that can't hear, and a mouth that can't speak." And I held up the phone and showed how it's got each one of them. And then it's got an apple with a bite out of the back. Adam had my phone. Or whoever did this one, maybe you have your phone. Okay, so idolatry is still alive today. We just don't think about it in those terms because we don't have little gold men sitting on our shelves. I mean, whatever that may be, for me, it's lemon bars. Or these cookies, oh my gosh, delightful. I have many, many. But you think about, anything that you put above God, I joke, that's your idol. And really, in today's society, if you read these, what's the idol? Me. I'm my own idol, because I'm choosing each one of these things above God. And as we're reading Revelation, I'm reading this, I mean, you ask my wife, I went through my closet and pulled the clothes down to give away. It just feels horrifying, frightening, as you're doing this. But we follow all this stuff. Science, we can now create babies. Create them in a test tube. When you think about any of that, the technology, we just talked about my phone. My lemon bars, wealth, oh my gosh, money is the greatest idol in America. He who has enough boys wins, right? Nike, just do it. And then we talk about governments, institutions, and celebrities. I'm telling you, John was writing directly to us. Directly to us.
Andy, can I share this?
Yes.
So my twin nephews, two for one salvania is my sister-in-law created, my father cried. They just recently went to a retreat for three days. They were very apprehensive about it. I talked to my nephew, Alexander, about it. I said, baby, Aunt Jackie went to, on a pilgrimage with Arleva Lake University for two weeks, two whole weeks without her phone.
Yeah, kids can't do that today anymore.
He said, I don't know, you can.
I remember days when we didn't have a cellphone. This is a different group in here, there's a very different dynamic in here than there is on Tuesday night. When I'm looking at these people and tell them you can't have your phone, they're like, huh, I'm gonna die. They've been connected forever. Or just the overstimulation, whatever it is. My only thing is, I think this statement is, needs to say, hey, you need to rethink literal idolatry. We have it just as much as everybody else did. It's circular. That was my only point. Okay, let's finally talk about the book. So here's an outline of it. Here's an outline of it. It starts with a prologue, and it's a very limited outline, but just so we can focus our thoughts on it. So it starts with a prologue, and then a greeting, and an initial vision. Then he's gonna talk to seven churches. Then he's gonna start talking about what's gonna happen after. And this isn't all of them, but some of them. There's the worship in heaven, we see the spooky Jesus. Then he tells us all the warnings. Then he opens the scroll and bad things start to happen. This is where it gets bad. Then we see the church at worship. There's two prophets, and they're slaughtered and killed. Then we get the trumpets. So we're just gonna see two twin things, right? Seven trumpets, seven bowls. And how are these things kinda going together and working back and forth? But, remember, as we're going through all these, these are all designed to draw us to repentance. To repent. And if you don't repent, it's just like any other book of prophecy. Repent, if you don't, there's gonna be judgment. And it's really bad here because it's at the end of time. And then, we finally get down to judgment and salvation. So we slog through seventeen chapters of this awful stuff happening over and over and over again. And we finally get to judgment and salvation. And at that point, Jesus comes in glory, and New Jerusalem comes down. So this is another one of the crazy things. So, our Protestant brethren talk about left behind. Left behind, you're left behind, you're losing. If you're left behind, you're the winner. The ones that got thrown into hell are the losers. I wanna be left behind, I wanna be with Kirk Cameron here when Jesus comes. I do not wanna be with the group that went away, neither do you. Where are we going in the general resurrection? Where is heaven?
With God.
It is, definitely, but I'm with God now. Yeah, with His presence, definitely.
Eternal peace.
But we're getting our bodies back, I gotta go somewhere. So we're getting our bodies back, where are we going?
Here.
Here. Yeah, we're gonna be here. Jerusalem comes down at the end, if you see it, we're coming here. It's gonna be here. Never says anywhere in there that they're gonna destroy the universe and all. Jerusalem is coming here, and God's gonna fix creation, and we're gonna live here. What that means is endless lemon bars. No, it's gonna be different, right? Am I gonna be married to my wife anymore? No, remember, there's a difference there. The marriage won't be there, it's gonna be different, that's glorified body, but we're going to live here. We're gonna live here. I mean, the Bible talks about feasts and wine and all these fatty foods with no cholesterol or calories. It's fantastic. No, it's gonna be something, we just don't get it, right? Remember, we don't, we don't know how this is gonna work, but it's gonna be here, and that's made clear. That the New Jerusalem is coming down, we're gonna live here with God forever. So if we look, what's Revelation really saying? Started here with Genesis and Adam in the garden, and it's gonna come full circle to the end. God's gonna fix what we broke, and we're gonna be back in the garden of Eden, is really what we're saying. Okay? And then, after we've been running through the wringer, we finally find out about heaven, and we wonder if we're gonna go, John just ends it with a nice greeting and says, hey, carry on smartly. A little anticlimactic there. So, we've got fifteen minutes, let's talk a little bit about Revelation. Okay? So you guys are gonna, we're gonna, yeah.
So, if we're gonna be here, what's going on in heaven?
So remember, they don't have their bodies back. They're just spiritual, and they're, we're in the spiritual realm, wherever that is. Once the final judgment comes, they get their bodies back. They're coming back here with us. And then they're gonna go one of two places, right? They're very clear, we're either going into that pit where there's gonna be wailing and gnashing of teeth and the fire and all that stuff, or we're gonna stay here. God.
Most of the Jewish followers do that.
Oh yeah. Yeah, and that's what Revelation says. Yeah, that's what Revelation says, right? It says, the New Jerusalem descends. We're gonna go up and meet Christ, and then we're gonna come down with a new Jerusalem. And this is where we're gonna live forever with God and His presence. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Did you guys hear this question? So he was asking about where we're gonna be, and where the saints are right now, right? So, if we're in this circle, right? Right, here's the beginning, here's the end. The end is where the New Jerusalem comes, we're in here somewhere. Where we are in this line, we don't know. We could be over here, we could be right before it happens. We just don't know, right? But we know we're in this middle section somewhere. We are the peanut butter and jelly of the sandwich. We're in there, right? So when we die, or the saints have died, and all these people have died before us, they, the body and soul separate. The soul goes to the spiritual realm in heaven, if we're lucky enough. And we'll be there, and if not, we go to hell and we're hanging out. And there's no reprieve. So, we're gonna go one of two places, and then when this happens, when this final ending happens, New Jerusalem's gonna come down, we're gonna all get our bodies back, and they're gonna be better bodies. They'll have hair again, thin, nice skin, it's gonna be wonderful. And then, you will go, you've already decided where you're going, right? Unless you're still here. Unless you're still here when it happens. You already know where you're going. So the people from hell get to come up, get their bodies back, and go straight back. Do not pass go, go back to hell. Yeah, it's not good, it's bad, it's really, really, really bad. And then, the other people will stay here with God, living in the new renewed Jerusalem garden of Eden, whatever that may be. Does that mean we're eating figs? I don't know, we don't know. I'm hoping there's no bathrooms, and we don't have to do that anymore, and it's just done. And my hair will be perfect all the time, I have these transitions to heaven, my hair is gonna be perfect, the wind's gonna blow, and it'll look wonderful. If I have to be bald in heaven, this is not, this is not fair. I've been bald once, I'm not doing this again. You won't ever have to wash your hair, this could be fantastic. Anyway, I digress. Let's talk about Revelation just a little bit before we break out of here. Next week, we'll have more time to chat, but we're getting the participation. So, this is a prologue, right? This is the only time the word revelation is used in the book. It's in the first, it's the first word? That's it, it's the only time it's ever used. And we put all this to it. So this is how they would title the books. So, the proper title of the book, it's not the revelation of John, it's the revelation of Jesus Christ. That's the name of the book. The revelation of Jesus Christ, which God gave him to show his servants the things that must soon take place. So God gave Jesus, wait a minute, I thought Jesus was God. God and man, he's God and man, so it was given to the man, part of him. To show his servants the things that must soon take place. Soon take place. He made it known by sending his angel to his servant John, who bore witness to the word of God and to the testimony of Jesus Christ, even to all that he saw. Blessed is the one who reads aloud the words of the prophecy, and blessed are those who hear and who keep what is written in it, for the time is near. I'm gonna try to wing this, so I'm not bouncing back and forth, but I might have to bounce back and forth a little bit. In fact, I'm gonna have to bounce first, so I can see what my notes say. Right, so I've already talked about that. The full title of the book is the revelation of Jesus Christ. It's the only time it occurs in the book, seventeen times in the New Testament. Didn't mean bad things back then. But this is, the message is urgent. The message is urgent. This isn't, so, we don't know what's gonna happen, it could happen tomorrow, we could walk out of here and it could happen. Right? Right, so it's urgent. What must soon take place, he says it there, and he says it, let's throw those here, for the time is near. So he says it twice, this is urgent. This is urgent, if we don't repent now, we're gonna be in this group of the other people. Okay, so it's an urgent message, what John's telling us. Second, it's liturgical. Poor Mary had to go start church because she's a sacristan. But it's liturgical, this book's liturgical, he tells us right in the front. It's intended to be read in a liturgical community. John pronounces a blessing to the lecturer who reads the divine message, and to the members of the congregation who listen and heed it, literally keep its teaching. Blessed is the one who reads aloud. This was meant to be read in church. This was meant to be read in church, and then we need to listen to it and keep it. So, I'm blessed twice because I'm the lecturer and I'm listening to it. You better be blessed once, all the guy gets in first. I'm just keeping, just joking. Okay, so it's meant to be read in church. Blessed appears in there several times. It's the same Greek word as he's using to be attitude, so it's weird. So he's alluding right back to the beatitudes. And funnily enough, guess how many beatitudes there are in Revelation?
Seven.
Yeah, seven, they're complete, so there's seven of them. There's seven beatitudes inside of Revelation that they're talking about. This is the first. This is the first. Okay? So it's talking about that. And then, Revelation is just about the end, it's about ethics. It's gonna tell us how to act. So, it's urgent. Very urgent. It's relevatory, so it's gonna tell us what's gonna happen. It's liturgical, shows the importance of church, which is about as Catholic as it gets. And, it tells us what we need to do to be blessed, so it gives me guidance on what we need to do. It points me to repentance. That's what it should do. So if this scares the daylights out of you, you're in the right place. If you're just like, yeah, it's spooky, you might wanna come back to class on Tuesday and Thursday next week. We got a couple minutes, let's just do this too. So we're all, both classes are the same. Is everybody okay with all that? I mean, that's a lot of meat in three short verses. Three short verses. I think what else is important in here as we do it is, this came from Jesus. This is in Jesus, a lot of our, a lot of Christians like, well, you know, Paul wrote this, got it. I love me some Paul. I love Paul. If I had to choose between Jesus and Paul, Paul's not deciding whether I go to hell or not. I'm going with Jesus, right? So they're important, they're showing, this came from God. This is God Himself telling us this. I underline angel, that's a, we've got this weird thing, everybody thinks it's a naked baby with wings and a diaper. So apparently, there's still diapers in heaven. But, they're not, right? Angel just means messenger, just means messenger, and they're just telling them all this kind of stuff. Okay? Alright, let's go to four through five. Because we got time, let's do it, four through eight. John, to the seven churches that are in Asia, grace to you and peace from both him, or excuse me, from him who is, and who was, and who is to come. I'll send these slides to you guys. And from the seven spirits who are before his throne. And from Jesus Christ, the faithful witness, the firstborn of the dead, and the ruler of the kings on earth. To him who loves us and has freed us from sins by his blood and made us a kingdom. Priest to God and Father, to him be glory and dominion forever and ever, amen. Behold, he is coming with the clouds, and every eye will see him, even those who pierced him. And all the tribes on earth will wail on account of him, even so, amen. I am the Alpha and the Omega, says the Lord God, who is, and who was, and who is to come, the Almighty. There's a lot of meat in there too. Let's talk about it. Seven churches, we know seven's fulfillment, so he's actually writing to these seven churches. Could be a letter to each one of them, addressing things. But it's also meant to appeal to the overall universal church. And if you read those letters, which we will, and we'll talk about it, and you're gonna go, he's talking about us. Yes, he is, he's talking about us, it's very compelling. And you'll see each church has a different problem, and you can see how it, Christianity can progress in our lives with these problems, as you'll see. I mean, one of them, they were really zealous at first, and then they kinda fell off. It's like, all y'all are here this week, and next week, I'm gonna have half as many people. You're that church, no, I'm teasing, I'm joking. Okay. Seven spirits, what's this? Anybody have an idea of who that is? We're gonna flex our algorical minds here real quick. Who are the seven spirits? Churches, okay, it could be the churches.
Archangels.
Could be archangels? What does seven mean? Wholeness, complete, right? Who's the whole spirit, at a Y on the end? Whole spirit, Holy Spirit, what's the Holy Spirit? It's completeness of the Spirit, he's talking about the Holy Spirit. Yeah, a lot of commentators are saying, well, every commentator, especially the old church fathers, are saying, this is the seven spirits. So if the seven churches is a general church, then the seven spirits is gonna be the Holy Spirit. It's the Holy Spirit, he's talking about here. So, I've got grace and peace to you from him who was, is, who was, and who is to come. What does that sound like? That sounds like Exodus 3:14. That's what the bush told Moses. That's what the bush told Moses. So this is God the Father, the Holy Spirit, and Jesus Christ. So it's an unveiling of the Trinity, right there in the first part. He's talking about the Trinity right there. Okay? And then it talks about Jesus Christ, the faithful witness. What did Jesus witness? Died. So the Greek word for witness is martyr, that's where margarita, that's where martyr comes from. So witness, witness up to the point of death. He's the firstborn of the dead. What do you guys think that means? That's a nice, beautiful little image we need to think about. Firstborn of the dead. Yeah, the first guy resurrected, and? We think Old Testament, what does firstborn connote? So, in, yeah, okay, let's go and look. So if I look here, I've already talked about most of these. Seven spirits, Holy Spirit, Trinity, witness, martyr, so that's, I'm gonna witness up to death. This is what we're required to do, this is what we're called to, to witness this up to the point of death. Okay? Firstborn of the dead, first member of the human race to get a glorified body, Jesus. He's it, we're good, we're all of that. What we don't know is that's a point to the priesthood. And if we go back to Numbers, I told you, there's tons of. And the Lord spoke to Moses, saying, take the Levites instead of all the firstborn among the people of Israel, and the cattle of the Levites, and the cattle of the Levites instead of their cattle. The Levites shall be mine, I am the Lord. Who are the Levites in the Old Testament? The priests. The priests, absolutely. So it's pointing to the priests. So, what this is telling us is, Jesus is a martyr, he's the firstborn, like you guys said, he is the firstborn of the dead. He is a priest, and he's a king. Where did I get king? I got it right here, ruler of the kings of the earth. So this gives us a clue as to what Revelation's gonna talk about. He's gonna talk about, since he's all these things, martyr, firstborn, priest, and king, we add all these together, that's the important theme we need to be watching for as we read Revelation. Christ fulfills in himself and his church the original calling of Adam. When Adam was put in the garden, that was his job, was to be a witness. He was God's firstborn, he was a priest, because he was worshiping all the time, and he was the king. And then he failed. Then he failed, he lost. He had a choice between his physical life and his spiritual life, and he chose, we all know, he chose the lemon bars, he ate the apple. He ate the apple. Then Jesus comes in his life, faced the same tests. Faced the same tests, right? We're all tested by lust of the flesh, lust of the eyes, and pride of life. The apple was, looked good to eat, it was pleasing to the eyes, and it desired to make them wise. Straight from Genesis. Jesus turned the rock into a bread. Here's my stomach, ooh, look at all these kingdoms, I'll give them to you. And then, worship me. It's all the three things, same three things, Jesus passed. Right, so he's gonna do this in his physical life and in his spiritual life in the end. And when we think about love, everybody wants, English is really bad about love, right? We wanna, love is that great, nice, wonderful feeling we have about other people. That's affection. That's affection, love is will. Love is will. There's many times, including probably right now, that my wife does not like me. But she still has me, right? So there's a difference. So God is love, because that's what they have, they give everything to each other, holding nothing back. We as humans are given that choice, and how did Jesus say that our, the greatest way to show our love for another human was? No greater love hath man had than to give his life for another. That's what Jesus did. So Adam had to die, because he should have done that in the first place, and he didn't. Jesus died because that's what total life-giving love looks like when it's offered by a human. So Jesus did, in his humanity, what he does in his spirituality and the Trinity all the time. He's given God the Father and the Holy Spirit that all the time. So, this is all gonna be tied up in a revelation, because this is what Christ is gonna do. He's gonna fulfill all of these things. That's how rich this book is. This is why the book's Catholic. I mean, that's, that is the, that's almost a Catholic dogma, right? We're put here, we sin, we repent, we're made whole again. And, we did nothing to deserve it, Jesus gave it all to us on the cross. It's free, it's free gift, there's nothing we can do to give it. So that's what Revelation's gonna talk about. Okay? And I just said that. Jesus did, in his human nature, what he does in eternity as the Son. He pours out his whole life. Okay? Throughout the book, we're gonna find this link between martyrdom, being a child of God, the priesthood, kingship, and sacrifice. The whole way through. That's a lot. Is there any more from the break? Oh, we gotta talk about the last one. So Alpha and Omega, did this drive people wild at first? No, have you ever seen the key row, and we got, and we got the Alpha and the Omega in there? It's just the first, it's like the A to Z. It's the same thing, it's the first and last letter in the Greek alphabet. But, just to keep in mind, if we're reading these things, there were no chapter numbers, there was no punctuation, all the words were running together, guys, all you guys remember eight tracks, right? You're listening to the song, you know, ah, I wanna rock and click, 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 roll all night. That's how the scrolls were written. That's how the scrolls were written, they get halfway through a word and they keep going. So the way they would point out importance is, they'd frame it with a sandwich, so Revelation's a sandwich. It opens with, I am the Alpha and Omega. And at the end of the book, it says, I am the Alpha and the Omega. So, this is the way John is showing that God said this word, this is not me. It's framed by God being the Alpha and Omega, which is the first and the last, and that points to Isaiah, look that one up later. And testify that this book is from God, so we better listen. Okay? The last thing I'll say, I think, is, who is and who was and who is to come, the Almighty? That's a throwback right to the Greek Old Testament, that's how they would write out God's name. Who is and who was and who is to come. Right, and think about that, I am that came in Exodus, very, very bad translation. Doesn't capture it quite correctly, quite correctly. It's not a good, English is not good on this one. Because what it really means is, it means this, I am who is, who was, and who will always be. I was always is a better definition of God. I am, without beginning, without end, always, I am. And so they would write it out this way, because it was a little easier to understand. We're not gonna go there. But we are gonna pray.